He has been reminded of what it is and where we are. So I just sit and wait for him. I will leave it up to others to catch him up.
You'll catch up.
Hmm?
You'll catch up.
Yes, and Denise Perry has had an emergency situation of serious danger arise this morning. She had everything to do with being here by nine, and that is not gonna happen. And let's all, you know, let's all hope things work out for her. So, this is a workshop. And we have two topics on this workshop. And we have only two topics on this workshop. We're not gonna deviate off of these two topics. I know that's very difficult for us to do.
I was gonna bring up firing you.
Yup. It's like, I'm all in. I could say there that, I can all hear. So with that, um, we've got two great topics to talk about. I think these are going to be pivotal topics. I'm excited about them. I hope you're excited about them, because I think they're game changers for our community, big time. Uh, I'm gonna let the first one, does Jared have anything you wanna say here?
No, I welcome our opportunity for us to get together, I think, like you said, Mary, of these two topics that we're gonna discuss. One, this is a, this is an initiative that, that you guys have, have started with some master plan, uh, concepts. And I, I'm excited for the court to see kind of the thought processes that have gone into it, where it's headed. And as usual, then we will get into mutual discussions about collaborating on our, on these things. So it's, I'm glad we get together, this is a great opportunity.
Well, with this, and I want to address that now, I want to welcome our guests in the back. And particularly, Mr. Williams, because Wilma's retired, Mr. Grant's retired, Mr. Williams is not. So we, we certainly understand your commitment here. Mr. Coffey?
I'll do the first time report. Is the courthouse expansion discussion, which is rooted in the downtown master plan, really is where the idea came from. We have had various conversations about the courthouse for years as a community, and I remember that when we got in. And at one time, the AOC had came to the city and was trying to do lease for federal building as temporary space. And, and so I think there's been acknowledgement of AOC for a number of years, that courthouse was, was constricted on its space. And acknowledgement that something needed to be done. I don't think anyone ever actually came up with a great idea, yet. Um, so, uh, then we, we entered into the downtown master plan process, which, which will lead to the end of this conversation. I'm gonna start back at the beginning of, of that process, just as a refresher for everyone. And then we'll get to, uh, the idea that, that, uh, popped up for the courthouse. The downtown master plan that had three basic things tied to it. Connectivity, which is the number one thing, which is transportation improvements to pedestrian ways and access. Connecting different parts of, of space within town. For example, Center College to Main Street, how, how do people move back and forth? If we do a good job with that, then we know we need to make streets for people, which is why the city is doing the Streetscape project. Trying to improve the environment for pedestrians. We know that we've had pedestrian accidents at intersections throughout downtown. Uh, Third and Main is the most recent that we've had a traffic accident. And then ultimately, uh, that leads to downtown infill development, which is great. We've talked a little bit about it. Dambler doesn't have a large blighted area in its downtown. That, we are not, uh, a lot of other communities that have fought or dealt with downtown rebirth or regrowth. They have had these, these unused industrial warehouses and things that they've had to, to figure out of how to redistribute those for other purposes. That is not Dambler's problem. Our problem is, is really, um, our downtown is confined itself over the course of time. And, and we need to, what, and, and the words of the consultant team, we need to take a moment and grow downtown. And find a place so that new office space can be constructed, so that new space can be added to the inventory, not remove buildings and do that kind of thing. We want to infill, we want to grow our availability, grow our supply so that the demand can be met. So those, those became the three main things that, that guided a lot of, a lot of the other talk through the downtown master. So they came up with some objectives. One, um, the, the idea that Dambler should feel more like a college town. Go back to the beginning. Ultimately, this addresses livability, right? You wanna be a community where people wanna live, okay? So a lot of the objectives then are centered around livability and, and how that then, uh, is incorporated into downtown. Uh, objective Center College, Dambler needs to feel more like a college town. And, and people wanna live where things are happening, where, 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 the, the next, go ahead.
Not interrupt you, but, but a question. Are we, or is the city, the state, anyone waiting to make major fixes until this downtown master plan has been fulfilled? Or are they looking to do stuff now? My, one of, one of the issues I see in, in center downtown is the crosswalk confusion, really, you know? Nobody knows how those crosswalks work and the budgets or anything, so is anything they've talked about with the state on, on those issues?
That's the downtown Streetscape. The, the city commission has funded that construction. That's in design now. Got four million dollars. Four million dollars.
Just to...
Rebuild Main Street, the, the Streetscape concepts do bump out, address your crosswalks.
I'm just saying as far as like, you know, somebody, it, there's two buttons. I'll just use my, my corner as an example. There's one button there, nobody knows which button that, which light that controls.
Yeah, the state's not gonna, I mean, we're talking about trying to go to construction in, in the spring.
Okay.
Right at this point.
So there's a, there's a, because, yeah, I mean...
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get an idea of when all this is gonna happen versus like, it doesn't make sense to wait for years and then say, okay, now everybody come downtown. I'd like a buildup of, of people coming downtown. That, that's one of those things that really needs to get addressed, because goes back to safety concern. They, they made some improvements, but if people don't know when to cross and when not to cross, and when it's gonna be their turn, and just cross them anyway, it's still...
The state, the, the state has done a lot of intermediate work to those intersections downtown. With controls, they, they've heard of signs as far as visibility. Part of the problem even goes down to the nuance of where the sign is. Those things, to the extent the state can do something about those, has been done until those poles are replaced. Uh, those poles were replaced, should be done during construction because of the amount of money involved. True story. And so, but the good thing is, is the commission has funded four million dollar investment in the Streetscape. And we're looking to try to be in a situation where we can advertise the construction in January, February, and March timeframe.
Okay, so it happens.
That, that, that intersection, the, the biggest intersection, I guess, of Coatesville close to here, would be Third and Main.
Yup.
And most of those buttons, as you well have said, uh, they will almost stay, the light will stay what it is for a long time until somebody hits the button. They don't know they need to hit the button to cross. And then they have a, a delay before the light change.
It's like, it looks like there's one button, you don't know if that one's to cross.
That way or that way.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, there should be two buttons, but anyways, trying to...
So then, um...
There's not, there's only one. You don't know which one you're getting, like, okay, I guess I'm crossing this way.
Yeah. So, so then, so, so you have connectivity, make, make Dambler try to, try to be a younger environment. Residential, we want to spur, take action to spur residential growth downtown. Take steps to, uh, uh, supply additional food and drink downtown. The, so, so the master plan on these objectives went into specific things for each one, um, that we should target and do. And so there was a lot of, there was some, a little bit of meat behind these objectives, like workplaces. So, uh, we do wanna grow downtown so that you have modern work environments where people desire to locate their offices, right? We need to renovate some of the old structures that, uh, to make them feel more modern, not just usable space, right? And so those ideas, uh, were, uh, contained throughout. Retail services, consolidate parking. Uh, we, we have a large number of surface lots downtown. That restricts building development or, um, uh, construction in spaces. Then, then one of the things that he highlighted was the county government center. As, as something, it was easy for them to get into, as they were going through the process, they, they saw some things as a group, as a design team, as a, as a consultant team. Yeah, they saw Main Street is needing renovation. Yeah, they saw, um, space, the parking lots, um, being excessive around the hospital, for example. And excessive meaning, too many. But then too, they noticed that, yeah, the courthouse, it's time to renovate it. So they started spending energy on trying to figure out what that was. And hospitality, the hospital, uh, our streets, multi-use trails. So they just had, had, had specific objectives, but then, Jason, to your point, they spent a lot of time identifying safe streets. Identifying things that we could change with the Streetscape to make downtown safer. And things that the city should, should consider investing in, or the community should consider investing in to make downtown safer. And so the city has taken, taken, uh, action based upon the downtown master plan. We hired a, a, an engineering team, a design team. And, uh, I think Josh should start talking, uh, he, he's had some individual meetings. I know he's had Streetscape committee meeting. And I think the next step will be starting to go outward more as we go, as, as he starts to get, um, a design developed, right? So that he can start talking about that outwardly to the community a little bit more. So I think that's the next step, that's coming in the next couple of months, I would say. Um, then, uh, so then what, what, what he got into, what the team got into was, when they got into the downtown area, it, it lent itself to having these, these areas of focus. And he, he had KSD's campus, he had Center's campus. He really felt like this blue area should be medical. This is, uh, the, what he called the south entry corridor, east entry corridor. He had recommendations tied to each one, um, that, that were a little bit more specific about how you should think about each area of the community. And, and there was a couple of things we'll highlight, this white area. At the end of the day then, it, it all circled that white area, which was basically eighty percent parking lot, right in the center of our downtown. And so he came up with some specific initiatives that the city's working on, trying to, to infill that, right? With, with structures and, and, and growth, right? Create, what, what can we do to promote that? And then on this little orange block on the north side, he called the, uh, institutional or governmental. In that area is the fire station now, City Hall, it's the courthouse, the art center, the library. It's all of the stuff that makes our governments work, really the core business. And so what he, then, then that led them to talk about courthouse more and more. Because if that's the core block for institutional use, you don't want this problem. You don't want your, your core area for each one of those functions, you don't want them encroaching any more outwardly than our ER, because then it gets a little bit confused. So then he started thinking about, what can I do to make sure these institutions can continue to function in that space, in that footprint, right? Well, the city, City Hall's been renovated, fire station's being renovated, so he knows that those are good, the art center works. He came up with some recommendations for the art center, for their campus, and I think Josh and Nikki are working on those for the parking lots, trying to make that usable space for them. But then he just turned around, looked at the courthouse, said, okay, I've gotta figure something out on the courthouse, okay? And then, uh, he went through this process of really targeting each district with specific goals. Little things that we can do. For example, on hospital, one of the things that he talked about was we've gotta do a better job on Walnut and the hospitals. That's just a dysfunctional area, where the ER comes in, where the, that's, that's quasi their main entrance. And he really wanted to put pressure on the hospital throughout time to try to figure that out with the city. That's a city street. And so we've tried to do that with the hospital and talked to them a little bit. Then the, again, he's got, got recommendations in the orange, which is your institutional. But one of the notes he wrote was keep courthouse downtown and find, find ways to expand it to meet its needs, right? So he spent, then he took that and dove into the, and spent a little time on it, and then came up with, uh, uh, strategies for each area. Of course, this is that, that white box. He, he, he tried to provide just vision, not necessarily something very specific, but he, he tried to highlight for you that it's eighty percent parking lot. That generates not a lot of tax revenue, that, that's underutilized property for the government. But also it's, doesn't create space for people, space for cars, right? So how do we change that space to make it space for people while meeting and supplying the need for parking, right? And so, um... And businesses, right? The need for parking, which supports our businesses, supports all, all as a community. Some of one of the things he did talk about is if you could build that parking garage, then you can free up all this, this space for redevelopment, for structures. So he had a specific recommendation for that core district, but then he got into, uh, 3D image of that, then he got into the courthouse, which is what...
I don't want to interrupt you, I'm not gonna interrupt, but talking about parking garage, parking, is it a parking garage in Utese downtown now? I don't think it's utilized like it should, is it?
About eighty percent of it's reserved, I would say.
It stays for...
Yeah. It, it's leased, even if someone's not parking in that space, someone's leased that space. So it's their, their leisure when they park it, right?
You go through that parking lot, you'll see a lot of signs, just like a lot of spaces say reserved, reserved, reserved.
How many spaces do, does, uh, the hub have, do you know?
Uh, we have, I think, five.
Yeah. Five of the, so whether he uses them or not, five of those spaces are reserved for him. See what I mean?
In terms of it, are it probably...
It's got, it's got some turnover spacing on the second floor, and then on the first floor was handicap accessible parking, handicap parking. Uh, the turnover spaces on the second floor, it was designed to, to cover its debt service with the leases, and that's what we did, right? The operations, the city supports that in whatever way is necessary.
So did you get any comments on the parking garage?
No, the goal, the goal is operated at a, at as close to, to not loss as possible. And we lose money on the operations for parking every year, right? For just parking enforcement, parking management downtown, and the parking garage is part of that. That's a loss to the city.
The only way you can get that thing built...
I take that back, that's an investment for the city, so the investment, the city...
The only way you can got it built back then was because the revenue stream was developed because of the reserved parking lot.
Yeah, so, so...
They knew they had their revenue stream.
So the city invests in parking management every day. And, and so when we're doing downtown parking enforcement, that's investing in trying to help that operate. And help, try to help the, the stalls and the cars turn over. That's an investment, right? The parking garage, when that was built, the debt service was covered, so then that just became part of our operation. So we invest in, in operating parking garage, just like we invest in operating the payroll parking on Main Street. Same, it's the same thing. So then, uh, so then when they got into courthouse, you know, I've sat in the, in the jury room where the judge has said, jurors, I just hope y'all don't get a ticket. Because, you know, we don't know anywhere to park, right? Um, that's organized for the courthouse. So when the courthouse is in session, downtown parking is a disaster. It just is. Um, the jurors gotta do the best they can with their little print tags that they, they put in their window, but it, it's not functioning well, right? So he thought about that, and then he talked about this idea that the courthouse could be expanded on that side. It would expand well on that side. Why didn't it happen, why did somebody not talk about it before? Well, it's because the city owned, owned the bulk of this lot right here. So then the, the AOC, whenever we went through that process, just quit talking about it, because the city owned the lot. Well, we need to look at it a little bit better than that. I mean, we, we have an opportunity to keep the courthouse downtown and to keep the appearance of it the way it is from the street. And then modernize it so that it actually functions correctly. We would have additional space in it so that everyone would have the appropriate office space consistent with what modern expectations were. It created an opportunity. So one of the things that we did on parking garage on the south side is do the retail space, we condo the retail space.
That's a huge thing.
Uh, our, on the city's garage, we did something similar to this. So what, what, what he suggested was, instead of having this behind the courthouse, because the city's got that parking lot leaned into the city. City, county figured out, worked together, and developed that lot to support the courthouse and be done with it, right? If we do a good job of that, and then your businesses in that north side of Main Street would have upper stories to, to get off the street end, your street parking then becomes more flexible. Then we can have a, maybe a different conversation about how to allow the operation of the Main Street or the on-street parking.
Good question.
Yes?
How many parking spaces would that...
Three? At whatever you want it to, you could, you know, you can go up ten stories, you know, back down. So it's up to you really.
So at least probably, at least fifty per level.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's, you, uh...
I would imagine you would manage the one on Walnut. And so how many square feet are, are there in the addition?
In the orange, in the courthouse addition?
In the orange. I think there's like forty something thousand.
I can, uh...
Yeah, no, it says right there, it says...
I can't read the numbers.
Forty thousand square foot addition to the courthouse.
I almost put courthouse here right there.
Okay, you go dumb now.
And so, um, they, they, they pushed us to this. So I talked to the judge just a little bit about it. I talked to Trudy just a little bit about it. And at this point, what we, we would like to do is support the, the fiscal board and going to AOC. And, and we need to, if you see what communities do, you know, you have this little courthouse panel group that, that takes the lead, carries the ball on Frankford, to the AOC of Frankford. And, um, the, the judges, we, we need to meet with the judges and, and get them, um, get their opinion, get them vested in supporting the operation. Dambler, Wall County's one of the last courthouses in the region. Uh, we, we've had little AOC investment in it over the last twenty years.
That's good, it's good.
Um, and, and it's, it's just time. It's time that the AOC invests in Dambler and invest in that courthouse, in that location. And so what, what we would, what we're asking, or, or what we're offering, I guess, is the, the, really the correct way to do it. Let's go talk about it with the AOC and see what happens. And so let's assemble that little committee, whoever that committee needs to be.
Earl, when you say invest, where's their source of funding, AOC? To go beyond what they do currently?
The, the state legislator, if you're the state...
So that would be the only route?
That's typically what they do. They have, they have budget, they have capital, they have a capital program that they're allocated. So you're asking them to spend their capital in Lawrenceburg or here, wherever, right? And so it's just, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, it's time that it's, you know...
Our turn.
It should be our turn.
Oh, yeah, they, they've allocated it elsewhere, I mean, I hate to over there, county's in that, that facility down there, so they've allocated it elsewhere, so yes, it is...
What, what they will say is they've allocated it elsewhere because they had an obvious solution in other places.
Right.
They didn't have an obvious...
And is that your district? And that's the thing here.
Are you the courthouse or is John courthouse? So...
You present them an obvious solution.
That, that everybody supports.
That helps them a lot.
That we all support. We, you know, if we can get behind it and rally behind it, then, then I, we could, we could get...
I, I really like this concept, and to me, it's a most logical place to expand courthouse and also save our, continue to utilize our beautiful courthouse. So I, I, I think to me, this is the answer, the infield in that space.
I don't know what you wanna do about a committee, I'm happy to serve on that, but since...
I would like to put something together to work with the, and, and, and the commission, the planning, and all forward, the M C and everything else. I will say this, most of y'all know on the court that I've been interested in expanding because of Trilly and others' lack of facility and space. They're sitting on top of each other, it's almost ridiculous. And so I'm looking at KSD and other options, which I've told you about.
Yeah, when we go and PBA, well, and you're gonna have, I mean, it's gonna be a problem, right? It, it's gonna be, you're, you're gonna have temporary offices and all those things. But when we go in PBA, it, it, they're not functioning like they're...
They're not.
They, they, they can't really perform at, at a level that...
This would give an opportunity to address safety concerns in courthouse as well, to go with us.
Exactly, so, but the black, like Peter and Andrew just said. We can't bring any more personnel into the courthouse, because we don't have space for them, we don't have desk space, floor space for them.
One of the other things is...
We don't have a place to have a professional foreman.
Right?
No, we don't.
One, one of the other things, the mayor, you know, has his school desk, it's pretty soon used today. In the, in the, in the same way that we have, uh, that, that retail space on Third Street at the other garage. You know, you're talking about adding, the idea is that we could add that same space there, and from the street, it changes your Streetscape a lot, as demonstrated by this. But, you know, you could have a situation where that regional, um, ID for your driver's license should be, could be here, right? If it's not a retail business. Because, you know, you're, you're going back, you're trying to consolidate your government functions that, that are city, county, inside of that orange block, right? So if, you don't want then your driver's license thing stringing out somewhere else, keep it all right there, right? And so this, this does, whether you do commercial space for this and condo it out like the city did. So the city condoed that out and sold that space on Third Street. That, that was sold. That, you know, we got what, eight hundred thousand dollars out of that, that we, or something, whatever the number was, four hundred thousand, I can't remember.
Four hundred, I think that's right.
I couldn't remember if it's four for each, but you're right, it was total four.
Because we're in charge of the bus, the bus...
So, so you could, you could lease this out, or you could use this as a tool to go talk to the state about... And, and, and I, I believe, same conversation the judge and I had the other day about the vaccines. There's two hundred thousand people in the region that don't wanna go Lexington, they don't wanna go to Frankford, they don't wanna go, they wanna, this is where they're accustomed to coming, you know, so they naturally, the roads naturally bring them here. So let's lean into those, those government things that, that folks want to, you know, they want to get medical care here. They don't wanna have to go Lexington. They want to build a process, their government stuff here. They don't wanna have to go to Frankford.
Yeah, this also provides an opportunity to, I wouldn't use workforce, but there's a lot of buildings that could be some upkeep downtown. And if you put in nicer opportunities, people will wanna move to those newer buildings. And it kinda forces existing landlords to put a little more investment in the building that we have. I, I, I don't, I don't see a need for any more discussion on it. I think for, for a state like mine, we can all agree that there's something that needs to happen. Or I would say that some we need to look at, if we need to gather a...
So would the, would the court and the commission be in agreement that, that we put together a, a, a strike team? Or to, to go forward with AOC to discuss the opportunities and the options that are being presented here?
Yeah, whole argument.
And our legislators, whatever it takes, wherever that pass takes.
Get, get the masses. I'm gonna go as far as to follow up on that. I'm gonna go as far as to ask Judge and Earl to pinpoint people on it.
Yeah, I would like, I'd, I'd like to be able to do that.
Need some coordination.
Yeah.
I would like to suggest that a goal of a day we plan so that there's, we know when we're gonna try to get this done, have this communication. Here's July the fifteenth, we need to have an appointment scheduled in the AOC by the middle of August. So, meaning we, we need to be calling them now to try to pick that day. And so if you pick that day, we'll be able to get there. I, I, I would be happy to sit down and make the call with the judge, together.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it, together.
Let's do it.
But they need to hear your voice.
They will, they will.
And communicate immediately with Elliot and Gerbler.
Uh, I, I had a chance to sit down with, uh, both of them, um, over the last two months, probably like a minute's schedule. But, but I had, I had showed them the master plan, included these slides within that, right? So Elliot is well aware of it.
Elliot and I was also chairman of the appropriations for AOC.
Correct, that's why I'm saying...
I think we could get this up further and also bring, uh, bring Guthrie into this, and, uh...
I would like to.
I'm sorry, I said Gerbler. I've not met with Gerbler yet, I met with Guthrie already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Gerbler and I were, were, had, had conflict at times, and so we're still trying to get together. Matter of fact, that takes the Kim on my...
I think if you have a conversation with, uh, with Daniel, he can, he can relate it to, to Gerbler as well, so it'd be, it'd be...
So is that a great goal with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to help, but I don't have any changes to be... Yeah, I'm happy to help, but I don't know who James should be.
Um, so that's it. I appreciate it. We'll follow up with the judge.
Yep. I would try, I would try.
I think that's the, that's gonna be the key. I will say, just as a little testimonial story to the job that was done, Julie and all those, anybody else who was in the room that was involved in the, the current parking structure. Our son, our oldest son was away from Danville at the time that that was being constructed. He came back into town and had driven past it several times, and he finally asked me, he said, "Dad, hey, you know, weren't y'all talking about building a parking garage? And where'd you build that parking garage?" And it has such a great appearance from the street that you don't even know it's a parking garage. And I think that's a real testament to Julie and everybody that was involved in, uh, in the construction.
When we saw barbecue festival downtown, I had to explain to people where the parking garage was because they would drive right by it.
Right. And that's the way I think we wanted it to be.
Yeah. Uh, question, Earl, Paul, and then Mayor, uh, you guys keep talking about the new firehouse. What, what about the existing one in that US Bank parking lot? Is there any headway on what, when you could go there and, if I had an eyesore there with that parking block right there?
Very radiant there.
We are, so this is...
Or is it something we can't really talk about right now, Sean?
No, absolutely not. The, the, so this is the block. This has all of it on there. So I'll go back to this slide.
Right, yeah.
Um, this is the block, and you can see how much parking is out there. So the, the building per square foot is terrible relative to the occupiable space per square foot of length.
Right.
And so what, and especially being on Fourth and Main. And so, uh, the, the consultant was very specific that we have to target this for something else. It's gotta be something else. If we're gonna grow downtown, we have to acknowledge that, that the city's gonna have to invest something. We have to make that something different, right? And, and he, he was very clear about that, and, and quite frankly, he said that's gonna take investment, and it's gonna take government investment to make that happen. Uh, he said, "Folks won't understand it," but he said, "If you want your downtown to grow, you're gonna have to do that." Now, downtown stability is, it's, it's a basic economics. It's supply and demand, right? And people go where supply is ready, and therefore, when people are trying to locate their offices and locate their, their businesses, if you can't find available, good quality office space and good quality physical environment, then you're gonna go somewhere else. So that pushed naturally, right now, what his point is, is we're naturally pushing, because we are so focused on parking in this downtown area with surface lots, we're naturally pushing our businesses away from downtown. It's just basic economics. And so what he's talking about is then, if you invest in, in your downtown and start to create that movement in the opposite direction, then your downtown will grow, okay, with structures, with, with occupiable space. And so what he's suggesting is on this block is that when we get done with the apartment with a fire station, which is on the north side right there, is tear that down and then market that property with one big R F V or whatever it looks like.
Am I correct that there are serious, uh, concerns with the underground situation of that parking lot?
They resolved that, uh, according to EPA about fifteen years ago.
So it can be built?
Absolutely.
Good.
And so, so we've talked to US Bank in good, in full transparency. We've talked to them. They, they're not opposed to doing something liquidating that corner. They don't want to lose their banner off of that corner. They want to be in Danville, in other words, but they're willing to talk, uh, P and C Bank's willing to talk. Uh, all the users that own property in that block are willing to talk and willing, willing to do something. So for us, we're, we're circling back to, that's the bottom line.
I, I can use this as the example, but back to the supply and demand, I mean, we do have people coming into this town. If you look at Walmart on the south side of town, there's, that part of my school all the time, so we have people coming from all over into this town, except if we had something downtown to give them, they would come here, so I think the investment is, is, is right to do, so.
Yeah. Um, it, it really is, and, and, and what, with, with the move of, you know, the livability, we have to work on it. I mean, people don't want to live in a parking lot, right? They don't, they want to, you know, people want a modern space to be in, and, and so to the extent that, so what happens is, it's, and, and we're not the only community that ever has said, "Well, I guess we need a parking garage," right? Like that is, go to Nashville, go to Lexington, bring your downtown...
Franklin, Tennessee.
Franklin, Tennessee.
Go Franklin, Tennessee.
Yeah. In order to, in, in order, it is more efficient to park cars in a parking garage than take up your downtown with surface parking lots. Safer, and it's significantly safer. It's easier to patrol, it's easier to do parking enforcement on it, saves the city money over the course of time, because we don't have an officer walk, we've had our parking officer hit by a car walking the street, right? More than once. And so, you know, there's a better way to do things, and sometimes it's just you gotta invest and, and you have an exp, it's okay, you know, the city and county theoretically are, are running the city and county like a company, and it's okay to invest in that and you're gonna get a return on that. And the return on that is you create an environment where private dollars are invested, and then your taxes grow, right? And, and sometimes we look at it, well, the city's spending money. Well, as a community, you're deciding to invest in parking so that your community can grow, and that there's, you know, that argument was made, and I, I, it makes a lot of sense to me, but...
So the snowball on the top of the mountain on this has been the relocation of the fire department. I'd bring up that old building that frees up something with the adjacent vacant lot, and then expand from there.
Do you definitely remember the parking garage right there?
Yeah, what's the, um...
My prime, my...
And, and what, what he specifically suggested, so this, this three D image down here in the bottom, this picture, he took that and, and, and drew this out of that picture, that three D model, and he's talking about, "Look, you've got an opportunity on that corner to make it pro town," right?
What, if, if you did that, how much, what would be your footprint, the size of your footprint on that corner with the fire department in that open lot?
It, it, the problem is, it's not just the fire department up the lot. There's four property owners. If you go back and look, this is the thing that's always been, uh, you know, I don't have a good, great picture of it, but between Chris's building and our building, there's four property owners. Think about that. So the biggest problem you have is not just how much does Block Eight add, it's we've gotta consolidate all those lots so that as, so that we've got a property that you can do something on. Right now, you don't have that. Right now, if you have, and, 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 you know, we've talked to Chris about it. I mean, he knows. I mean, we, you know, it's just the, it's just too many small parcels.
I think what John's asking is if he takes this line down through here, over to here, particularly this footprint right here.
Yeah, I don't have that script either.
I think our, our best, and, and this guy would help with another issue that we have as far as housing, you know, retail spaces on the bottom, apartments whatever above, condos whatever above, you know, if, if, we keep talking Tennessee or whatever, but if you look just up in Lexington and Fred's Farm, what they've done there with, where they've integrated the housing and also the retail space, I mean, that's...
Julie, how long you been pushing up the shore of the avenue?
Twenty-five minutes.
Uh, any question, never mind.
Well, Jason, this, this is what, so I talked about him giving additional information that, that supports it. So I gave you some of the highlights.
Right.
But, but really what, what he go then to, if, and, and so I'm, I'm acting like the consultant. I'm, I'm repeating him, if you're not, I'm parroting what he said.
Gotcha.
Okay. His, his opinion was, if, if you as a community do a good job with this, one of the things that we need, we don't have here, is that space for people. So remember those three things on the first slide, the space for people, okay? So if you go to Knoxville, you can go over there to the old Market Street, and they closed the Market Street, and they have Cupola Honey, they have restaurants that open up into that block and people can walk around without getting hit by cars.
Yeah.
But they're downtown.
Yeah.
It's like that in, in Montgomery, Alabama. I can go to the, up that little alley, it's called the alley. I can go to, I, all over the place, you find that space.
Village of Carolina.
Yeah, you find that space. We don't have that, right? So one of his objectives is, what he suggested, well, this, this area around the town center is create that space, so don't close the street, close, build an area that operates like that as if it were a closed street, right? So then, so then Walnut Street, when we talked about what the hospital can do with, with emergency traffic, he came up with a recommendation to do the roundabout down at the corner, or, so he took the state's recommendation. The state did that small urban area study, about, you know, fourteen, came up with the idea of the roundabout down there at Wilderness Road and, or at Stanford Road and Walnut, and then start using Walnut as an actual street. Right now, everybody comes to Main Street, tries to do their, they, they try to go Center, they try to go everywhere off of Main Street. Well, why can't that happen off of Walnut? Two, also, that would take confusion off of Main Street sometimes, where people are trying to go north and south in different directions. So lean into Walnut Street, and then he talked about this Church Street, right? So Church Street right now dead ends on Walnut. Work with the hospital to move that down to Market with the King, which is also a dead end street, right? So suddenly you have two, with, with just a little bit of construction, you, you could have two new, modern feeling streets, and then suddenly you have an opportunity, uh, if, if the hospital would liquidate this, and you, you would have the opportunity to create this new residential, uh, neighborhood center on Walnut, right in the middle of that core district.
Right.
And the yellow would be totally, we, we've got to figure out how to incentivize private investment to do that, right? And so, so his point is, is everything we do here pulls, makes that land available for housing, for multi, multi-use, first floor retail, second floor, third floor, uh, residential, right? So, so everything in this, this image, this demonstrates the pulling of the cars into, into this block, and then you, you create an opportunity, a new downtown street, and that could continue further south of the hospital, if, if we can continue to consolidate parking from the hospital, right? And I don't want to talk for Dan, but I've, you know, we've talked about this a little bit with him, right? Yeah, for great.
Earl, how, how do you, you've got to remember, you've got to keep the challenge of the greatest sport down in Danville. That sport is called jaywalking.
Highly skilled.
They are very highly skilled at it, and they love to.
Yeah.
I've got a letter, Jack.
It's actually, it's safer to jaywalk.
It's amazing.
So, so for, for the, at the end of the day, what we've done is, we've taken the ideas and, um, the, the image that, and all the, all those little notes on those slides, we took, we, we have taken as staff, so, so everybody's like, "What are you doing with that? What's the downtown master plan doing?" Well, what we're doing as staff is, we've identified a target in each one of these. So we've gone and we've talked to K S D board, right? Like, we've met with them, we're talking to K S D. We have something targeted in each one of these blocks that's staff, somebody with the city's working, right? So we, we work with Center, we, uh, on their seventies, so Center's getting, getting ready to spend sixty, seventy million dollars on their campus right here, right? So we're actively engaging them in that, right? We're actively trying to support the hospital with, uh, Walker Hall, but we're actively trying to support them with this targeted things that were on their slides that he recommended we do with the hospital, right? As it relates to this institutional area, conversations with you all on the courthouse. So that's why we're talking about it here.
I can, I can tell you right now from experience, we are not ready for that Center expansion. Uh, just with the G S P kids that have been in town lately, if you watch them, they get their dates off on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they flood downtown, and there were certainly only three places for them to go, so this conversation needs to happen just a few months ago, um, and we need to kind of speed up to be ready for this, or else whatever Center does to try to enhance this town is gonna be a letdown. So as much as I love the business, you know, personally, you know, we, we are at capacity in a lot of ways.
We are. As, as, as a community, it's easy to look at things, and, and, and we, the partial rent master plan said the same exact thing. It's easy to look at yourself and think that you've got boxes checked, all right? It's easy to look at winning park and say, "Hey, we got a park checked." What we're gonna realize is, is you don't have a legal baseball field for thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids in Wall County.
Right, I just, I just, you know, just watch anybody from, any of the kids from Center walk from Center down into downtown to the bookstore, which was, was, was the whole idea, to get them downtown. They pass a lot of places that really don't have any interest for them.
Right.
And so, you know, we, we need to be...
We need to be on that, and, and we, we are, as a community, it, our problem is not trying to spur demand. Our problem is we can't meet the demand. We are under capacity in streets and roads, in our building space, in our office space. Believe it or not, it's the opposite of what we have always perceived. And the other thing is, I told the mayor this, this week, we've got to stop looking around at Bartstown. We're bigger than Bartstown. We're bigger than the other communities that are immediately around. And so like, when we model ourselves, we've got to start acknowledging what we are as a, as a governance, as a community, right? We have more demand on us than some of the other communities, and so we have to act that way, and we have to act like, if we're gonna be a regional city, if we're gonna be a regional draw, then we've got to act like that.
There's one word he just used, and, and, and I hope it, I'm gonna say helps you reframe it. We all talk about our town. We're not a town anymore. We're a small city. Everything that happens in any city in this country, good or bad, happens here. Any crime that's committed in any city in any country has happened here. So we are a small city. I only say that, preacher, because we have changed our frame of reference. We have changed our thinking. We got, we got to come out of our little provincial mindset of our little suburb here and think, "We're a small city." Now quit looking at smaller cities, a smaller town, excuse me, start looking at cities. What, what have they done, good and bad?
Yeah, fine, when, when you, when you combine all of our economic activity, we don't have a lot of peers. Our peers are like Madisonville, Hopkinsville, and Wind End Peak. Our peers is Henderson, our peers is Murray, um, Somerset. That's really, I mean, Richmond, Frankford. That's our peers.
We've got to understand our limitations as well, though, and while we are a small city, we can't lose the appeal of what we have. People come here because they're like, "It's a nice, small-town deal." Why, they, they, they want some of the amenities, so we can't...
You're right.
We can't, we can't try to blow up and be like a Lexington, because if you see Lexington's a disaster with how they, their structure.
You gotta do, you gotta do a good job with it.
You gotta hang on to what you've done well, but then also grow and expand with, with that mind.
For the conjuncts that Center College is talking about, we don't want to give away, and, and I respectfully agree with you, that, that we don't want to give away the concept of Title Town, because a, a great part of their plan is gonna be drawing people in K H S A and, and drawing people in all over the state, so, so Title Town has a ring to it that we can't deny or give up.
Sorry. Jamie's heard me wanting about it over the last, like, six months, about like, "I can't keep up with all these kids coming to town." I mean, there was, where they had the...
Have you ever seen somebody get so pissed off by getting business? You get out on that counter, and your tournaments are in town, and you can come in there.
But that will expand exponentially with, with the Center plan for athletics.
But honestly, when they started doubling up their, their, their athletics, it was, it was hard, and that's, that's just a taste of what we're gonna get, so.
I, I believe I'm pretty accurate in saying this. If you walk downtown and you've heard other statements about it, there's a lot of service industries on Main Street, and, and they're not meeting those kids coming through on those occasions. We need more retail, restaurant, those kinds of bookstores, whatever, something that captures their interest as they come downtown.
Which is why the consultant said, "We've got to think about pulling the pedestrian access onto Walnut and creating that neighborhood center on Walnut, spur that, incentivize the construction of some of those buildings, and invest in that as a place where what you just described happens."
You look at Nickle's though, you see the biggest problem they have with their main street is it's all law offices and stuff that really just brings people down just for a few minutes, and then they're on, and that's not what we want.
What I do like about what we're seeing here is, is the district concept. I'm very familiar with Fort Worth, Texas, where I went to college, and they did the district thing, and they had like the historic stockyards district, the cultural district, the, the, the government district, the commercial district, and you see those entities that fit into those...
And you see those entities that fit into those blocks conjugating that area, because that's where people go to get, you know, what they want out of that functional area. So if it's in the commerce district or if it's in the cultural district, they'll go see a play at the Mañana or something like that, because they know where it is generally. They get used to traveling around the community, going district to district to district for whatever purpose they're out there searching for.
They have roads back there?
They're dirt patches. Well, to keep us moving.
I wonder where you're hitting those a little bit.
To keep us moving, we, so we agree, we're going to work with the judge and we'll figure out the LC thing. And we're going to keep pushing that, just know, hopefully we can get something to come back to each body and we'll just see how that plays out over time. There's a lot of work that we are doing as a community towards the ideas espoused within the downtown master plan document. And we're working on those every day, somebody with, the city is for sure. And so if you have any questions, holler at us.
Cool.
Moving on.
Let's do it.
So Ben, I would like to say one thing about the EDA document. Stephen sent this last night and I didn't get a chance to print it this morning, to be honest with you after I. The page on the paragraph, some of the dialogue we had at courthouse the other day, you all talked about not liking the paragraph where it talks about withdrawal. When I talked to him about it, you know, he was like, well, really all I was doing was just citing portion of the law. I really wasn't trying to, you know, go too far one way or other with that. And I said, well, what they talked about was, is if you want to cite part A, then cite part B too. And so he included that in, so this is a revision to the document. And he included this paragraph eight, which says, "The agreement shall terminate only upon dissolution of the authority in compliance with the statute." So here he cites part one, here he cites part two. And he talks about how upon complete termination and dissolution of all funds and property and assets held by the authority or return to the local government proportionately what they get. Right, I think that's fair. I'll ask Chris, like, just to give this to sense on what he gets to. I mean, I think that's all we were asking for.
Yeah, and we've responded to that and we've added that paragraph eight for you.
I think that's an appropriate and right response, because I know the court, when you came and presented, when y'all came and presented, that was the first thing that we noticed, that it looked like there was an oversight or revision and it's in there. So from that perspective, I think we're all comfortable with that piece of, that observation. I don't want to speak for everybody, what do you think, guys?
I don't think, I think.
I think that's a good addition.
Thank you, reduce Tom to Duncan there.
Okay. Well, in all seriousness, no, in all seriousness, my notes, and I guess we don't blind to go every detail. But just as Jason has an expertise in what we might do in town, I would like to be part of a small group to get together and go over significant notes that I had all throughout the document and discuss them ideally with Chris and with Steve Dexter in the room, so that we can hammer out some of these concepts that are concerns for me until.
Could you give us an example of one of them before we bring it up? What's an example of one of your concerns, if you'd like to just give it out?
The concept that we talked about and on tape, I listened to it a couple times over the weekend, where Earl agreed that we need more information about how we'll handle the bylaws and how they will be coming back to each body for approval. And I don't think that's very, well, it's not specifically stated, and that's just one, but that's a major one. Because otherwise you could have the group of EDA almost freelancing without control of the city or county.
Let me ask the follow-up question then, go ahead. In order to do that, I think it might save some time for the court to get to take your concerns and you guys hammer them out, reach some consensus and raise your consensus to us.
Good, that's okay with you.
Because otherwise, you got your concerns and I'm going to gain here some. You know, so I think, we presented something to you guys and we sort of took water over. Now that you all need to drink water over, it comes to consensus and come back to us if we need.
Oh, I get it.
Other than we do is just really.
I think the reality of that situation, I understand what you're saying and I agree with you, I think the reality of that situation is that the group representing the EDA opposed members of the city commission and county fiscal court developed the bylaws. Those bylaws still have to be approved by both bodies. That's just no other way to operate.
We need it spelled out, that's just one example that I can bring. But I agree with you, I think if we hammer it out as a court.
Well, if we say that, but look at our CBB, our CBB kind of runs.
Different deal, that's a different, huh? It's a different deal.
It could end up the same circumstance.
Yeah, I don't, eh, wait a minute, yeah.
We have to be cautious.
Here's the thing, well, yes, you have to be cautious and you have to make sure that your board is functioning. That's the key to it. If the board's not functioning, you got to change the board. You got to change the people on the board. But at the end of the day, whether we're talking CBB, heart of Dammel, chamber of Congress, whatever, it's the board. And if the board's not getting it done, the board's got to be changed. And that's, gentlemen, ladies, that's our responsibility.
Right. Well, I share that. But the one nuance on this court too is it's primarily elected officials, other than the county. The minority is your appointees, the majority is your elected officials.
Right, so my fundamental question, we've been this all along and I still have the same question is, what is the purpose of the EDA?
The purpose of the EDA is defined by KRS, is to purchase available commercial or developable land.
For economic development.
Okay.
To be used, to be used.
Yes, if within economic development.
Okay, so, and that's where I want to get back to the structure then. The next question is, if I'm a business that's wanting to expand, move, locate in Boyle County, who do I contact in the future?
Jody last.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
But now, if you're an industry, then Jody's got to come to the EDA, which is the city in the county, and say, ladies and gentlemen, what can we do here? Because these folks want a hundred thousand square foot footprint.
Right, so that's, I guess the biggest thing in on the task force and commissioner of economic development has a question for us. We clearly have a need to have a public entity to use taxpayer dollars to purchase and develop land, which is the EDA's role. And the other thing that became loud and clear to us is that more important is that your community speaks with one voice when it comes to economic development. And I guess just my concern is that we don't create another voice to speak with by creating an EDA. But this all still has to go through the one voice. Because when somebody comes, when somebody's wanting to expand, which is eighty percent of our growth in this state and in this country is in expansions. The other twenty percent, everybody's fighting for, to get that other twenty percent. But eighty percent of economic development is expansion.
Well, I'd say, let me make, say three things. One, what you'll learn on the thirty-first, so the goal of the thirty-first is all of us sit here and listen to what other people tell us.
We state the thirty-first for everybody.
Which is the Economic Development Symposium, we're trying to get the invite out this week. We're trying to shore up and yesterday we did our last, right? So now we're going to work on the invite.
We have a bank of people who've been down this road, come in and share with us.
So one of the goals is, is for all of us, and you want to be sitting down, one of the things you will hear is that you do need to speak with one voice. One of the other things you'll hear, though, is the creativity necessary to support economic development, right? Which is why you have to have as many tools in your toolbox that you can. You have to have as, and you do have, it takes creativity, it just does. And some situations, you know, we have, the city and the county has done different things over the year, but the city's put in water lines, sewer lines, and with offsets. And we have negotiated water rates based on the demand and all these things. I mean, that's just, that takes, that's what it takes to spur economic development, to be honest, is that creativity. And this is just one of those tools that you would use to do that, right?
I have a couple of concerns. I sit here listening to us talk about the Willno Lees, you're building, you're building, you're building through City Hall. You're building a new fire station, you built one out on the byface, you're going to build another one probably on the byface. You're in the process of building one for now. But you can't take broken lines, they've been broken for two months and it's kind of watering down the ground in people's yards. I don't understand that, Earl, first of all. Why can't you get to your minor problems taken care of before we tackle major problems? And the second thing I have in mind is the fact that we've talked about for years, and Tom, you're the test of this, and the mayor, you know well and good, and I'm telling you like it is, about property transfer. We're trying to work out a deal with you guys, but it's not going to work down. So why should we go to labor again? If we can't get these minor things worked out. I've got friends, relatives, not relatives, but constituents of mine that need these water line fixes. Why can't, I've talked to you about this on one particular one, it's been two months, water pumping up the yard. That's a minor thing. Why can't you guys get a minor thing fixed before you get into the major?
Would be hap, have, was it?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Is that not done?
No, sir.
Okay.
I would, I would, I appreciate your comments, but I want to keep it on track with the.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get off track, but I don't think we need to hold on to concerns. Major project and we might as well fix it.
Well, but it's like this at my house too, or your house. I would say you don't always weed here, but we, those minor problems. You have to take care of everything.
I think the minor problem fixed, why take a major one on?
Well, sometimes you've got to do the major ones at the same time, though.
Your air conditioner breaks, you're going to fix that.
You're going to fix that when you have to.
That's a minor problem, I have to.
Actually, no, I can believe you.
Let the judge see if he can get off track.
We've got to bring the water line discussion tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know about that, I don't know.
Well, I guess Phil, that's also a conversation you need to have with your folks on fiscal court. You know, hopefully the fiscal court has a majority, which would agree that we need to get down the road. But if as a majority fiscal court says, you know, we don't agree with that philosophy and there's a majority feeling behind that.
I feel that the court doesn't have a thing to do with broken water lines in the city.
No, but we're talking about EDA, Phil. We're not talking about broken water lines, we're talking about the EDA and whether this conversation needs to be.
What Phil's trying to say is that for years, and granted, I'm kind of new to the Boyle County still, I've said that, I've been here for a while, but, you know, I even did since the division between the city and the county. And so, you know, just like anything, when trust has been broken based on past issues, you know, now you're a little more hesitant to kind of get in on things. I guess where Phil's kind of coming in on that, this is a trust thing. We need to make sure that, you know, we can kind of get together and we work things out now.
I wonder out loud why we look at the city like it's an enemy. Let's look at what the city's done over the last twenty years. Let's think about this, Junction City had an degree order and did not have a single built house built in Junction City without divisional order approval. They came to the city and the city took effort for ten years to fix the sewer system to support road in Junction City. The same thing is happening on Carroll Road right now that we see. The city, the city.
That's exactly right, we worked together, we worked together on it. But I, no, 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 I said, I said, I think what Phil said too, is that with any issue, you've got two people that are in the wrong. I'll say that county doesn't always do everything right, the city doesn't always do things right. We just have to nail, I think the biggest thing is getting over that speed bump. And I think this is it to move forward, but to have an honest discussion that, listen, we're in this as partners together, we're going to work together, we're going to move forward together. And we'll call the city an enemy. As you and I had conversations, I remember this, when I first bought the, you and I talked and we had conversations. And you explained very well to me that the county and the city have different functions. And we need to make sure that each entity understands that the county has a fiscal responsibility, the city has a service responsibility. And those things aren't always going to match up perfectly because of, not only are we a constitutionally, you know, required entity, but we just have different things that we need to do. So we need to keep that in the back of our minds when we're working with.
And the implication of both of those, service and fiscal, implication is it's all regional development?
Of course.
And the unique thing about this is that the board of this is going to be composed largely of people in this room.
Well, and what I'm talking about is not necessarily just calling and sitting in. What my point is, is that we're already working together, right? The county was involved, Lincoln County was involved in fixing, filling the building. We already, yeah, we already work together. Why is it that this issue, suddenly, we've got to nail down all these other things? But all that's already put, we're already doing those things. The city has already reached out into the county and we've taken the burden on the utility throughout the county to make sure that the people in the western end of the county have water, to make sure the people on the southern end of the county have sewer. We've already done those things.
I've tried, Earl, stay out of it, but I think what Phil has illustrated here is the, comparatively speaking, the trickle of water in those residents' backyard compared to the hemorrhaging, the hemorrhaging of funds in Junction City for sewer tax and Perryville for sewer tax is a huge impediment to economic development.
Let me hear, let's go back to the EDA.
I know it is, but I had to make that point.
Can we take his hand up for a while?
I think the agenda we've got to wave on, so I'd like to get back to it with this question, Earl. You mentioned tools in your toolbox, which I very much agree with you all. The authority offers us more tools than we have now, I believe. Would you mind covering what those extra tools are for both the community and for the prospect? Because I think probably the authority will add tools for both sides of consideration.
Could you give that, please?
Well, the primary purpose for the EDA is to acquire property and then figure out how that property can be transferred, that vests suits of perspective, industrial or commercial, right? So some people, you know, what the phrase that Jenny used in the kitchen just did right then is that, well, they give it away. Well, you recover it through taxes over the course of time. But some businesses are going so far today as to getting, converting future taxes instead of working on land deals. So they'll go out and they'll buy land and when, before they locate their business in the community, they'll say, we want X. And sometimes that X is convert all of my future taxes to cash upfront. There's communities taking that investment and writing that, basically distributing that future tax as a cash investment upfront. Now, you have to go through the metric and you have to prove a return on that. But there's all kinds of financial arrangements that are legal that are happening in other communities that we're not doing here.
And haven't done, and haven't done.
Because we don't have the authority.
And haven't had the authority ever, and everybody else has had it for decades.
So revenue streams become different and opportunities for future revenue streams open up for those involved.
Absolutely correct, yeah, absolutely correct.
Businesses based on revenue streams, right?
Now, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I like the, I'm becoming more comfortable with it and I like the fact that the purpose is clearly divided in this. Because again, I disagree with your, the bylaws are used to determine the structure, which some bylaws language is already in here as the structure. The bylaws determine the organizational structure, they don't determine the purpose of the organization. Organization's purpose is determined by statute and by these bodies. So that, I like, I guess, and I understand the financing concept that you don't have to put anything in unless there's land to acquire and develop. have to put anything in unless there's land to acquire and develop as far as our taxpayers' dollars. Do you see there being any other funding requirements for this entity?
I, you know, how many weird situations has the EDP found itself in trying to support economic activity? There's no telling what, you know, the, the document acknowledges that it's not restricting the EDA to source of the funds and also those expenses. Those are really to be determined based on whatever that situation is in the future. There's just no way to do that kind of stuff.
So that, but that's, that, that develops one of the concerns, I think, is that seems pretty vague.
It is, it is vague, but the statute is vague.
I mean, but the, I guess, so you're saying though that the funds that would be invested would strictly be for acquisition and development of property?
The authority can need.
Well, yes, and, and. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Spear towards an incentive package of some kind that you would likely be approving too, right? As, as a mod.
So I guess I'm kinda beating off this, how would, would, would that funding also pay for, you know, whatever director that would be over this or?
Not paid.
It, you know.
The director, the directors are this body, these people.
If you're talking about an individual, uh, that individual does not receive compensation.
Yeah, now the chairman, so there's no paid positions embedded in this. Now, am I saying ten years from now that you're not gonna have a staff of X and Y doing X and Y? I have no idea, and I'm not trying to predict that. And I don't think, one thing, the EDP didn't exist twenty years ago, it was the CDC, right? So we have no idea what our structure is gonna be, we have no idea what number of employees we're gonna have, I'm not even beginning to predict that. I know that if, if, if the city and county want to invest money in real estate, this is the legal mechanism that state laws set up with which you do that. Okay, that's all.
There'll be different people making those decisions by then.
Somewhere down the road.
Down the road, yeah.
Is this the interlocal agreement and not the ordinance, right?
That is the revised, uh, interlocal agreement.
And since you did this last night, Gerald said it, uh?
I'm gonna hand it up to Julie.
Okay.
I got it late last night, I, I meant to print it and hand it out, but I'm sorry.
The, the, the commission's already seen, but they haven't seen.
They've not seen this last paragraph, I don't know. Sorry.
Hey guys, I think that, you know, I, I personally came to listen to the court and I, I've done just that. And I appreciate the fact you all participated and expressed your view and opinions, but maybe, I just request one of two things. Number one, as a court, take the document, do what's needed to do to it, send us back the proposal. Secondly is our proposal that we're sending to you guys, there are five of us, there are seven of us who have input into this and we did not agree upon everything that's in it. But it's a compilation of what the commission is willing to say, let's move forward. So we're just sort of asking you guys to come up with a plan of what you think is appropriate and it represents to court, and it could mean you don't wanna be involved with all of them. We just need to know where you are in this situation so we can move forward and I am strongly in favor of moving forward the commission and the court together.
I appreciate it, I am too, and I think this is a good, you all answered, you know, my questions and my concerns. I think it gets us to a point where we wanna be.
If you ask the order as, the questions are gonna continue to come because, you know, it's a new, it's a new for the court and the commission, so we're gonna learn as we move forward.
I would like to add on to what you're talking about, that we set some dates, that we set some goals of when we're going to do it and when we're gonna have it done, and that will encourage us to get it done by a certain time.
Yes.
Well, I, move forward. Mr. Kenwood, um, you, you, if you as judges, whoever wants to spearhead that, the city's already passed our ordinance.
We had first reading.
And so as soon as you all have, uh, a second reading, then get the calendars out and let's start pending some, date some dates.
I think, I think that we're good for a second reading with this edition, unless, I mean, unless Manager Ellis has some other typos.
Forgive me, I, I really don't accept that concept. I'm very much, I'm very much.
I appreciate you recognizing that.
I'm very much taking offense to that because mine are very substantive concepts. I agree with Commissioner Atkins, but, uh, no, they are more than typos. Nice to say.
You don't need to get the, you said it was a lot.
I know, I did that, he knows I'm teasing.
We do discuss this, but I think it's important because like what was stated in our meeting before, we, we needed to get on this a while ago, um, and this is gonna take time to form. So the, the idea of us getting together and kinda having a discussion, you know, we're, I don't want to scream a match, but I think it's good that we kinda air out some things and we can kinda get stuff on the fly instead of waiting two weeks till we meet again to start discussing things along with the, you know, the, any other things we gotta discuss that, that will sidetrack us. So stuff like this is important.
Yeah.
As soon as you guys can have a special called meeting with the EDA, be the only topic to win yourselves and try to.
Well, we can, we can do that, or we can, we can put together a, a, myself and, and Jerry, a, a two or three, uh, nine and a half, four, uh, whatever, however, however the court wants to do it, to bring people together to flush out some of these.
And I was, I'm sorry, I was just teasing, but are there any big ones we can talk about?
Let's not get into them today. I know the judge has commitments, he's short.
So would a big presumption mean to ask if, if the fiscal court could have some conclusion by the end of this month?
I think so.
I think, I think that's true.
Absolutely.
I think that's true. And I know, I know it's not an official request, but I hope what I'm hearing this morning is that, uh, the court is inclined to move this thing forward.
I think we're, that's a, I was on that.
That's the feel I've got this morning, I appreciate.
I think we're consensus on that.
Okay. And, and, and that's the thing, I, I'll say this and I'll shut up. I, I've been on, doing this work legally for almost eleven years now. But I've lived in the city and county for over forty years. And we have got to start going back and saying, um, this happened fifteen, twenty-five, thirty years ago, this happened yesterday. When we resolve something, settle something, let's move forward, let's not go back. Um, I, I would never be married if I went back and told my, my wife every time she corrected me for the mistakes I made, so, but let's move forward. It's a new day, you guys have been willing to work with us.
That's why we're here.
Part of my question is this, I'll put this up here. Everybody sitting around the table that's an elected official has to do something in November of twenty twenty-two, right? That's why it's important to me. We gotta all be sitting here again after twenty twenty-two, and we gotta all have the replacement. So very serious about this, we need to make sure we get it in place, get it up and operating for the next election.
Uh, unless everybody has anything else, I do have another commitment, uh, where, where do we stand? Are we at a break point or are we?
I think there's a break point.
Are we, are we good that, and the court will get together and, and we'll do our thing and get back with, with everybody collectively, uh, right after the end of the month?
I would like to point out that I got an email from Hannah Donald this morning inviting us to the Lieutenant Governor, they're having some type of ribbon cutting or, or some type of grant announcement to the school district this morning at ten thirty at the high school on Whiteford Avenue. Uh, it's apparently a pedestrian sidewalk project, I'm not sure what it is, uh, but she wanted me to, uh, make sure everyone was invited, sorry and apologize. I don't, I think both of, Earl, we were there, I know several commissioners were there, I might have talked about this in court. One thing that stuck out with me in the, the last group was the Department for Local Government that put it together, or the Governor's Conference or something like that, we're, we're all just commissioners and, and managers together. And, and one of the most informative sessions that they had was where they had Scott County and Georgetown on a panel talking about when they finally got past their egos and they started working together, it really started working out well for them, and I, I think that.
We left it called Toyota.
Yeah, well, I think this is a sign of, of that, hopefully, we're at that point, let's just move on and do the best that people have to do.
With that said, uh, we, I don't think we need a motion to adjourn, we just adjourned.
Somebody has a, uh, the man called the agenda to discuss?
Can't do it.
On the agenda, on the agenda to discuss.
We do need to adjourn.
Mayor?
We do need to adjourn.
We do need.
Well, we do need a motion. Most of the mayors are second, thank you Phil, all the neighbors say aye.
Aye.